Good evening, this is the January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Joint meeting between the JV Fletcher Library Board of Trustees. And the Permanent Town Building Committee, so I'd just like to remind all participants that this meeting. Is being recorded, so all comments that are either spoken or provided in the chat will become part of the public record. Okay, so the first order of business we have is a called order for all of the roll call for all of the. Board members that are present. Uh, so Buffy, do you wanna go through that?
Yep, just to make sure I catch everybody here, so Claremont.
Here.
Derek's here, Fleckner not here yet, Ellen. And Roach not here yet.
Correct.
Okay, Secor.
Here.
Teal.
Here, sorry.
That's okay, Cook.
Love you. Here.
Hazelton, did I see Scott? No, okay. Karpinski.
Here.
Mahana.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
And Zagowit, um, yeah, Zagowitz.
Yeah.
Okay, well, sorry, I didn't see you there, Jim.
Just, I'm sorry.
And then Berlinsky. Not here, Perkins.
Here.
Thank you. Leiberg.
Oh, sorry, here.
That's okay, Rainville.
Here.
Goodwin. And.
Jeff is here.
Jeff, okay, now I see Jeff. Um, Monks.
Here.
Okay. And Solon.
Here.
Sal.
Here.
Um. Wilkovich. Forty. Leah isn't here then?
No, she's not joining us tonight.
Bono Bunker. So Andrea is not here, okay, thank you, and you?
Here.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Tom.
Okay. Thank you, um, all right, so, uh, there's no minutes to to review was, there was no packet that was sent out, correct?
Correct, Tom, so I I saved minutes and invoices for next Monday night, just for a half hour. And tonight we'll see the schematic design from Feingold Alexander as well. As the findings on the HVAC HVAC options from the library working group and the energy advisors.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so is there somebody from Feingold Alexander that's gonna? Go through the schematic, give us an update on the schematic design?
Yeah, Tony Shaw is gonna take us through the schematic and then Rebecca Berry is gonna take us. Uh, through the mechanical options along with Ken Beck, our engineer, so Tony, take it away.
I think I need to be allowed a screen share, I have to be invited as a participant.
Okay, and then for the record, can we also just note that Scott Hazelton has joined us also from the permanent town building committee?
Thank you.
And the share screen is all set.
Thank you, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, okay, I'm going to go through this, um, I know you have quite a bit. To review tonight, so I'm just gonna try to be very efficient. So tonight's presentation is to catch up everyone where our current design is. For the project and. The first thing we're just, this is the agenda with the schedule and Ellen's gonna speak briefly to that. And then I will run through the series of design plans and. And development of the scheme to date. So Ellen.
Okay, yes, Tony, this is is brief, so what, this is our overall project schedule, um. And it notes the various meetings in the different phases. We are in, we are just finished schematic design, as you probably know, and we are where the black line is currently. So out ahead of us, we have design development, another estimate. Construction documents, another estimate, and then out for bid, so it's an efficient schedule, but. Uh, we're excited about. Uh, moving forward in design development.
Right, so we're gonna lead you through just current plans and where we are today, and it starts with the. Site plan first, um, this is a sort of a composite. Of the landscape site plan and the beginnings of the parking layout. And this just simply shows you the relationship of the building which is here. Outlined in relation to the whole site, um, of course, my orientation, Main Street is over here to the right. With the red arrow and in the parking lot with the orange arrow coming in here and there's just series of developmental. Uh, notions on the landscape, which I'm not gonna elaborate. Tonight, but this is where the current design is and of course. Parking over here, which I think is around seventy three spaces, but I'm gonna have to come back to the exact number on that.
Could I just, um, just comment, make one quick comment on the site plan, so I know this is obviously premature, you haven't started any of your local. Permitting review, but, um, we had a, uh, we had a completely separate meeting with fire department, uh. Or a couple members of us did the other day, and so, um, we just just mentioned briefly that, uh, you know. Gave them an update on the library project and, um, so they were asking about the site plan, I shared with them. Uh, the plan that you would included in that design submittal. And, um, they forwarded on to be just make, cause I explained to him that how, you know, you've reconfigured the site, the parking added a few more. Uh, parking spaces and, uh, you know, improve obviously flow around the site. So, um, I'll send over, uh, I guess I'll send it to you, Ellen, their their template for the for the engine. Uh, for the ladder truck that they, you know, that they require has to be able to maneuver. Around the site, so I'm assuming that this site will work with that piece of equipment, but I'll just, I'll just share it with, share it with you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, it'll be very helpful. Okay, um, I'm just gonna now lead you into the floor plans, um. So. This is level one, which is the main ground level access. And just by getting my orientation, the parking lot entrance at the top of the page. The Main Street entrance is at the bottom of the page. And again, uh, what happens is we come into the parking lot entrance, we enter into an entry vestibule. And that lends into the central main arrival lobby here, which comprises a lot of new book collections and. In high traffic areas, immediately off that is the central control cert desk, and which in turn is backed by. Their cert workroom area for free easy maintenance and control and visibility to the public realm. Um, to the immediate right here, this is the meeting room, which considers about a hundred thirty two seats. And off the meeting space, we have both an area for storage, um, for a kitchenette. And it also has ties to the friends room, which also doubles the additional overflow in capacity as well, which is located here. Uh, as we move further plant south over here, um, this shows the most of the back of house areas, so. We have things such as the public toilets here and here, there's a gender neutral toilet here. And then immediately to the south of the toilets, this is essentially the processing cataloging, um, technical support areas. And in this particular zone, there's a lot of things that come off of that, there's an acquisitions area, there's applied storage area, there's a staff toilet area. And it in turn has direct access via this corridor to the main public areas here, so off of the. Central circulation spine, we find the elevator, new open public stair. And then to the plant south, these are more supportive areas such as receiving, circ office, library or things stored. And then ten mechanical, electrical, intel data. And of course, the other major component to the left of the main entrance is the children's library. So this whole area in purple, my purple represents the children's area. Again, coming into the children's area, there's immediate direct control with self checkout here. And that in turn is immediately adjacent to the. Head office here, which also is adjacent to program storage. There is a family dedicated restroom here, and then further to plant south is storybook, excuse me, story on program areas. All of which, um, has the ability to connect outside here and here to. A dedicated sort of children's outdoor play and storytelling areas and garden form along this side. Um, this does show, um, again, just by way of orientation, this dash line here. To the south of it, this is essentially your existing library, and then the new addition really is this portion here to the north. And just in the thing outlining the light gray. And here, here, and here are some of the existing walls, and then the darker walls are new. And then in addition to that, there are also two fires egress stairs here and here, stairs C, stairs B. Now, as we come up to the second floor, um, again, by orientation, you come up the major public stair here or public elevator here. And immediately off of that is the additional self checkout. Uh, the information services area, so this allows again, direct monitoring of everyone and patrons who come up the staircase. To the plan north, this is essentially the, uh, areas that are both reference lounge, reading. Um, public computers, it's a very open plan, loaded lounge and loose seating around the areas here, which also shows in this case. A double height space opening to below. Um, to the left of this, this is the young adult in the darker purple area here, which also has a. Dedicated young adult office right here for again for control. And to the right of this area here, we are a series of meeting rooms, there's a larger quiet study room here in the north, uh, northeast corner. And then these series of smaller study rooms, which are either individual study rooms or group study rooms, which are. Lining up along this edge here, there are some additional toilet facilities here and here and a generous closet. And then as we move further to the plant south here, uh, this represents essentially the adult fiction, adult nonfiction. The periodicals, the media areas and additional, uh, central reading and gathering. This does orient here, the Main Street entrance is shown here at the bottom of the page. Now, of course, this is not the accessible entrance that is from the parking lot side, but. Uh, I'm gonna point out a couple of things which in the next plan. Uh, you're probably gonna see there's a couple of ramps here, here and here, this is actually to. Create a differential in floor elevation, which I'll explain in a minute. And that has to do with this, um, when we look at the this particular level. The darker orange here represents, and this is really your sort of existing. Level here, and then all of this lighter orange color is one foot up. You know, of age from here, and the reason we're doing this is because. Since we're developing underneath this area here, large program spaces like the meeting spaces, the young. You know, the the central gathering and arrival and the children's area, um, we wanted to create sufficient ceiling height here below. Uh, to facilitate the kind of program spaces, so they don't feel really squeezed and impacted, so. There is a differential here between this floor and this floor, it's about a one foot grade change, um, elevation, where this is higher than this. And again, just the dash line here represents the existing below and then the new addition above.
Could you go back, could you go back for a second to, um? I'm just just curious, and I know. You know, you showed this in our previous meeting, but I'm just curious, just from like a symmetry standpoint, like that, what? Drives the number, I'm looking over, I know I'm pointing to my computer and you don't know what I'm looking pointing at, but, um. The group study and the individual study rooms, so. You know, what drives, you know, you're showing, you know, two group study rooms plus three individual. And you know, so that last one is kind of kicked down into that, you know, that adult, uh, nonfiction section, which kind of makes that room. A little kind of uneven, and I'm just curious what, uh. What drives the number, you know, the number of spaces, uh, the, you know, the the number of, um, you know, rooms for that?
Question, um, there's a lot of development in the program that has been involved both internally with, um. You know, Ellen and the staff, but also in reviewing with the MBLC, which of course. You know, is is providing a significant funding for the library, so there's a very, very careful vetting of program. And to the point at which even book count, seat count. Amount of lounge furniture, all of this has to be accounted for, and it's, and it's really carefully documented, so when we got the approval. From the MBLC grant, that essentially determines things like the number of study rooms that you're asking about. Uh, with respect to your question about the symmetry between here and here, um, you know, those are things which if it really becomes a. Question, there, there is still time to study further, but as to the counter, the rooms themselves, we do need to provide. Uh, five spaces here for that particular use.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm assuming that that's also kind of based on some sort of population statistics too and student pub, okay.
It's actually based on a lot of stats, there's a whole also detail which I won't get into and the public can answer better than me, but yes.
That's fine, um, I see Jim Zagowitz has his hand up, Jim?
Uh, yeah, I was actually, um, starting on the the ground level, I was kind of curious if you could take me through a real, real quick outline of what the. Um, enclosed spaces are as you enter the, as you enter the building, come into the lobby, it seems like there's a lot of walls and. Almost all spaces are closed off, I'm I'm sure necessarily, um, from that entrance sequence, I was just wondering if you could point the limit of that enclosure out to me.
Yeah, so it's a great question, one of the things I forgot to mention too. Is that the area that I think you're asking about, this is essentially. Largely the public circulation zone all the way from here to here. One of the key things about the library is for after hour use, so. When the library is not open in the evening, say, or other particular times, but like you need to. Host public meetings, so when you come into this entry vestibule here, there's a dedicated. Entry doors here, which leads into the meeting space, which then in turn has connection to the kitchenette. The store, the storage, potentially the friend rooms, and then beyond that, these public toilets here and here. This zone, this faint dash line here, this represents a really a security gate, so in after hours use, this gate comes down. And this doors are locked, so you know, all intents and purposes, the rest of the library is not accessible to the public, so it's only. Enables the control of of the libraries used. To develop this particular quadrant here for after hours use. So I I don't know if that answers your question, but this is one of the things I forgot to point out.
Uh, that does, it it helps a lot, and the other part that I was curious about is just. How the doors, I see a lot of doors that, uh, leave into, lead into actually out of a lot of the spaces, uh, surrounding that main. In circulation, I'm curious how those will be dealt with during the day, so in a normal condition are those doors always closed?
They will be secured and you're you're absolutely right, it's really emergency egress only. And primarily like in a meeting space, you you know, you have to have a second means out of these spaces, so. There is a necessity of a door there, this particular area here, this is really a service zone, and then the children's library here. These doors that come out of here are only going into the dedicated children's outdoor garden and storytelling areas, so the primary focus is here, so. Although there are several doors, of course, shown on this ground level plan, the public will not be using these doors to come into the library, they can only. Be for egress only, and this is the kind of be the main entrance.
Okay, and I'm thinking more in terms of when you enter the building into the, uh. Where you where you are directly under the open space above, I'm just trying to get a picture of how this thing will will present itself, it seems like there's a lot of walls, a lot of doors. Um, you'll have the 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 desk open there and then, uh, visually, I'm just trying to get a handle on what I'm gonna be seeing, it looks like there's gonna be a lot of.
No, it's it's another really excellent question, James, um, we are developing this in what we call three D, you know, modeling in Revit. And once we develop this further, we can begin to share later three dimensional, literally like walkthroughs and start and you really start to understand it. It is a little hard for me to describe it just by plan view, uh, but there's a lot of things that do go on in here, there is, there's a couple of small self checkout counters. This children's library here, even though it looks like a very solid wall, it's actually. Has glass, which you can look into the children's library here, these doors will have glass, so so there's a lot of developmental. Pieces about what the space is actually feel like, uh, that will be flushed out, um, I press a shirt that that is something we're very much looking forward to advancing.
Very good, thank you so much. Oh, I did that one on the second floor, I seen about the the right one third of the building that you had mentioned that. We're raising it about twelve inches, is that from, and that's from the current. Floor level, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct, and how do you do that?
We, well, we looked at, we looked at, we looked at one option which didn't do that. But it necessitated lowering this floor, we, again, you can see in this plan here, we need to maintain sufficient ceiling height. These are large progress pages, you do not want to have a really narrow low ceiling, especially like the meeting rooms in this area, the children, so. Um, and we also, you know, trying to not deal with your water table issue in your library, so we didn't want to go down, so we went up.
Right. Okay, I'm really primarily asking about that right here in purple side there, where we're raising, uh, uh, a third of the existing building, it seems like. You're pulling up a foot, and I'm just kind of curious how you're, how you're achieving that, and if we are, if you're doing so by pulling out the existing floor. And it's just for my own edification, but.
Yeah. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on that developmental piece.
Are you understanding what I'm saying?
This third here.
Tony, any diagrams that you started on will answer. That and the one after that.
Then I come, right. There we go.
Okay.
So all that like, the light pink. Light pink south of the, uh, the the addition, it existing wall, that all gets raised a foot, and I'm just curious, are we? Cutting that out of the existing building to then reinstall it to all inches higher?
Actually, that children's area already is raised a foot.
Right.
The the current, uh, the current east wing of the children's area. Already ramps up and is one foot higher than the two browsing rooms that you see, so, um.
Okay.
That already is higher.
Fantastic.
And that's why we, that's why we selected that level, that elevation for the floor to align with that.
Matches this, alright.
I do vaguely remember, it's been a little while since I've been there. Sorry to say.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's a couple of different subtle level changes in your current library that we're working around.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, uh, Goodwin, you had a question?
Yeah, if if we could go back and look at the slide of the lower level, I did have some questions about mechanical space as it relates to, uh, geothermal piping or the. The assumption that we're gonna be looking at geothermal, I see that we got blue mechanical rooms in the front of the building. Uh, where they currently live, uh, but is is it the assumption that any geothermal piping is gonna make its way from the back of the building all the way to the front to get into those mechanical rooms? Or is there any mechanical space in the back of the building? To to get shorter runs of that piping inside?
Oh, and you want to follow?
Yeah, at the moment, we do not, I mean, we're hoping to get a direction tonight on what are we gonna do for geothermal, and if we have to make adjustments, we will. Um. And Ken, if you wanted to comment about. About the the run lengths.
Yeah, so it, you know, it would be preferable to be closer to the geothermal wellfield, um, you know, at the, at the time of this, these developments, I think we were looking at. VRF in the schema, you know, the preliminary plan, uh, so the mechanical room size is probably smaller than it's gonna need to be. Uh, what, if we do end up going with your geothermal, we're probably gonna need some more space for the water to water heat pumps, the pumps and heat exchanges and. All the equipment associated with that, so, once we have a more definitive answer of which way we're gonna go with the system, we can start making some, um, accommodations for it.
Okay, thank you. Jean?
Um, so, so if we do approve geothermal, and it sounded like Tony said. That the planning is very tight. Um, all of the stacks and the numbers and everything is figured out in advance, and then it's all. Placed in here. Yeah. Is there? Is there any fudge factor in any of these areas that we can actually expand? The mechanical? Or would we have to build more building?
We can't, well, we don't want to build more building, so the idea is that would swap out where the mechanical is. And it's what Tony was, the the program, the program that Tony was. Saying the MBLC approved, that that's the program. Uh, of the square footage of this, of the spaces and the, and the adjacencies are something that they. They comment on, but they don't, uh, dictate those, so we, I think we do have gene flexibility on where we put this stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's actually right, and as we're getting integration of all the systems like mechanical structure and all that. Of course, as we move it in the next, uh, phase of development, these are when we fine tune and hone. A lot of the details which are still being developed, so as that merges through, we will find out. Where the pressure points are and where we have to, you know, study this further. The intent is not to grow the building any bigger than it is.
Okay, um, and then I I had just another quick question, follow up on the stairwells, so I'm assuming by code you need those two additional, um, stairwells for egress?
Correct.
Cause the main one obviously would is open, is that open all the way to the third floor or just the second floor?
To the third. Yeah, I, you'll see when I come up to the top level, how this continues to work. And it's always the third level is dictating a lot of what happens below. Okay, any other questions, should I keep going?
Yes, thank you.
No worries, uh, all good questions, um, so level three, um. So again, coming up the major public stair here in the elevator here, now we arrive in the third level. A lobby area here, and this is largely mostly staff area, so to the north. This really consists of, uh, like the director's office, the business office, there's some file and equipment areas, an assistant director. And a meeting space, um, which is really in this kind of concrete of offices here. Uh, to plan north, now there is a smaller toilet area here, um, off the main lobby and stair elevator, there's an additional conference room. Uh, which is right here, and then of course, to the south of that, in this larger pink zone, this is your current. Mary Atwood local history room, so this will continue to operate in that capacity which is shown in this zone. Uh, to the left of that is the staff break area here, and there's some additional small locker, uh, there's also another toilet over here. And then finally, to the left of this stair here is the additional things such as. The head of systems and office and server room, some storage areas. And then to answer your question earlier about the stair issue, so you can see here, this stair, this stair, these are the two, um, enclosed egress stairs which are required. And then this is a more open public stair, which connects all three levels, so this is the reason why we have three stairs, um. And again, this, just by way of pointing out, this area in light gray here and here, this is your existing, and then the addition is to the north of this. This does show that right we have going on here. If this is a roof area to the plan below, we're gonna show the three D kind of axonometric view. Which explains this, and then there's sort of a clear story light well here, which administers their daylight all the way through the double height opening down to the ground level. So with respect to a question about what is actually being demolished and where things are occurring in particular, when I want to point out a couple of, uh, things here, so. The center portion here is your eighteen ninety five stack room, which of course is at the back of your existing front historic library here. And then the areas in sort of the lighter orange color, these are mostly resulting from the later additions to nineteen sixty nine, nineteen eighty six edition. And for the areas that are really impacted, these are the zones. Which we're calling demolition diagram that we're really, um, demolishing, so. The the stack room area is being taken out, and then the areas to are being removed are really concentrated here, 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 and here to deal with both. Level issues, staircase issues and some other particular programmatic zones that results from the reconstituting of the. Library, and of course, everything north of this is all new anyways, since this is a proposed new addition. So as we look at the section, one of the other things I just want to make, make, uh, point out, so in this darker orange color here, this is the eighteen ninety six stack. Wing that is being removed, uh, and I will point out just a couple of key factors on this issue, so you can see here on the stack wing. On the, on the roof scope element here, this particular existing condition, we have to take out because we need to connect from this level to this level. Since on the third floor, all these programs faces have to tie through. And we can't have, um, the the reuse of this because that essentially interferes with the ability to connect from this side to this side. And for other reasons, including structural and other attributes, so that that results in the removal. Of the second as well as giving the revised floor level elevations, which you can see here, and just my mouse is hovering over it. This does show that the area where we're raising that floor on level two to create higher ceiling room underneath here. For both the meeting rooms and the children's area, and then this front portion here in your. Um, original historic part, as you come off of Main Street, here you can see where this is one foot down. From here, and that's the first introduction of one of the ramps, which you can see right here, connecting from this level to this level. And then the Mary Atwood room is up here, by my section. And this is the clear story, and then this is a double height opening to below here.
Jean, you have a question?
Yeah, um. Um. It is our building National Historic Register or something similar? And therefore is the eighteen ninety six stack room something that we really shouldn't be? Demolishing? Completely?
We are on the National Historic Register. Jean.
Mm-hmm. Um.
The whole building or is it part of being on that square, cause it's the square?
I think because we're on the common, but the stout room has. Been, um, pierced. Uh, dumb, you know, a number of, uh, windows were covered over and taken out, and it's not. Because for fire reasons in eighteen ninety five, it was designed as double brick walls, it's not the most stable, um. Interior walls anymore, so, um, I can look into that for you, but I think it's only because we are one of the historic buildings on the common. That we're on the National Historic Register.
I think we're contributing, Jean.
Okay, cause I I do find that when I go to the library, that's my favorite place to be, I find it so cool to walk through those stacks. In that part of the building, maybe it's the, maybe it's because it's the the books that are in there, but. I I like the historical quality of it, and. It it'll be sad, I mean, it's it's two hundred.
Well, first of all, I have to say, um, the eighteen ninety six stacks were only one level. And a giant statue of Minerva held prominence, so it wasn't until the nineteen sixty nine edition that the mezzanine was added. And the mezzanine is not fire compliant because it's basically a metal tray with loaded stacks sitting on all the loaded. sitting on all the loaded stacks below it. And there's at least a four inch gap all the way around. So that mezzanine would have to come out no matter what. And I can tell you, it looks lovely now. It didn't look quite well. It looked of its period when it was cornflower blue and when the new children's stacks in nineteen sixty nine were Howard Johnson orange. But we've, we have moved on from that colorway. So.
Okay, so there's nothing, there's nothing that is worth eighteen ninety six salvageable. And that includes the roof structure and other items.
Yeah, and again.
Well, the roof structured it that it would, the the problem with the roof roof structure is that it's it's essentially in the way of connecting the uh upper level from the existing to the new.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but that's because of the design. You could technically, you could have another staircase going up and have a big hole showing off where the cool trusses are or something like that if it had historical value.
Yeah, and if we if we kept the trusses, we would have to probably enlarge the building because that program that we have within that um would have to go somewhere. The good news, Gene, is we are keeping all the stained glass transom. There are ten of them all together. And I think there'll be some wooden turned and and um banister elements that we can hopefully keep. So um, the I mean, the trusses in the attic are handsome, but the floor is just loose boards, you know, over um, over the joist. So um, I do think we'll be keeping the important things.
Is there anything that that can be turned into cabinetry or, you know, taken to a sawmill? And, you know, are there any heavy timbers up there that would be? An artisan could do something with.
We could check on that. And of course, we hope to do something with the champion black oak in the the outdoor story area too. So we definitely could ask to have some of the joys saved and find if there's you know, something or maybe maybe someone would want them for mantles and we could make a fundraiser out of it. Yeah, we certainly could look at repurposing that.
Yeah, might we study that some further? It's quick questions, Gene.
Okay, Jim, and then Nancy?
Uh, I would just strongly encourage uh engaging the Historic Commission now rather than later on this. We're going to get way down the road and and they move relatively slowly. They will have very, very strong feelings about what you're doing. There's there's several of several of the commission will. And I, again, I just can't stress strong enough that you engage them sooner rather than later. That's it. That's all.
Speaking from experience, Jim?
Yep.
We're speaking from experience.
So just so, just so the group knows, Jim used to also serve on the Historic Commission. Nancy?
Yeah, I was going to say almost exactly what Jim did. I agree with Genie. I I think it's a shame to demolish that. And it's nice to say what we might save and maybe we'll save and we are going to save, but really is a shame to take down something that's almost two hundred years old. There's got to be a way. I don't know. Again, it has to go to historical and I'm sure they'll have strong opinions.
Okay, thank you.
Very much. Okay, let's keep going. So then the last series of drawings, these are simply the elevation drawings. So this is the current South Street elevation from Main Street. Uh, which you currently see now, um, and it's hardly going to look essentially attack the way it is with a few small selective areas of openings and then parts of the roof here and here as a result of the new addition. That will be popping up slightly, but it is going to be almost not really visible. From the east elevation side here, um, what you can see in the lighter gray, this is the existing um later addition, of course, to your existing historic part. And then the darker gray here represents the new uh addition, which is expanding here to the right. Uh, we are going to replace all the roof across the entire elements because we need to tie across the roof system. So it doesn't look disjointed. So this will be an all new system. On the north elevation, this is the side from the parking lot entrance side. This is in the center here, again, this is the primary entrance here in the middle. Um, and then it's flanked by sort of two gable and portions of the extension of those uh later wings that pull forward. This area here, um, it is set back about five feet. This is the a larger portion of the reading area on the second floor and then way in the distance back here, this is the office area, uh, which is at the back of the library, um, which is shown in just elevation. But of course, this is not how you can perceive it in reality when you look at it from a three dimensional perspective. The west elevation is very similar to the east. To the right here, this is your existing uh library wing here, and then to the left of this is the addition. Again, shown here in this demarcated zone. And then again, will be an all new roof that will be stretching across the entire wing. Just from the 3D.
It's the, excuse me for a second. Oh, Gene, I saw you got it. You had a um, it's the original library slate roof?
The original was and the nineteen eighty seven roof is synthetic slate. And there's and there's asbestos under that, correct, Alan? I beg your pardon? There's hazardous material? Yes, yes. Unfortunately, the eighteen nineteen eighty seven um synthetic slate has some asbestos in it. So we're removing that and that was budgeted. Yes, that's correct.
Gene?
Um. Yeah, um, I just wanted to point out at the meeting last week. Tony did say to me, you know, I had a lot of comments about elevations and Tony said that that these are very schematic, that there's going to be a lot of more um looking at the elevations. But something I didn't bring up, Tony, um, last week, and it has to do with this. Um, when you look at this front 3D diagram, um, the the nineteen seventy or whatever um addition, when it was put on, it the two wings are very clearly something not of the original because they pop out. Uh, because there's reveals. In the back, when you turn to the next page, I was thinking about it with the elevation, but when you turn to the next page, you'll see that the back is flat. So my hope is that when you develop the elevation some more, you get the the that feeling of wings in in the back like it is in the front. And but the reason I bring it up now before you start doing those elevations is that it's going to affect the floor plan. And I don't know how you're going to resolve it with the two big rooms in the front if you were actually pushing that center area back to get you know, that the feeling of wings.
I think I think, Gene, this is a developmental issue. I think we're going to have to work through the design. And as I said, we're in the process of exploring and refining. Uh, and there's absolutely a very relevant point also with respect to any new addition to an existing building given of a nineteen eighties wing. And we are going to make it distinctive because obviously you're going to have a control joint already that's going to occur between the the movement. And as we study much more carefully, the window penetration pattern and all those things, uh, these are refinements. With respect to your comment about the wings being expressed uh to the rear, and I know what you're getting at, which is saying, can you explore pushing forward or pushing back the center? Right now, the plan really doesn't allow us much latitude to take away area. Because we are really, particularly given the organization of the of the of the of the design, it's been evolving through is is selling fairly well with respect to refinements on articulation. Yes, we can look at a, we can look at more of these things that advance it further, but um, I'm not right now thinking at a liberty to say that this is what we're going to do. We have to study this further from a design and planning standpoint, so we're not there yet.
But I think your points are well taken.
Yes, absolutely. Now, we agree, this is going to undertake further study and requirement.
Okay, thanks.
So I think that really brings us up to the completion of the um, uh, the current design today. And really appreciate all the questions and comments folks have raised, and we look forward to continue to evolve it and move it forward with you all.
Yes, great comments. And so i- if folks are ready, we can move on to the, we have a separate slide deck for the energy discussion. And Rebecca Berry from our office, uh, who is uh our Director of Sustainability will kick us off.
Thank you, Alan. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, so we're going to talk about a couple of different things tonight relative to our systems and some energy code compliance. So we're going to talk briefly about solar and EV ready requirements that are in the current Massachusetts Scratch Code. HVC system options, including recommendation of an option. And the Inflation Reduction Act, as that relates to the option that we are recommending and the cost, of course, both from a first cost analysis all the way to lifecycle costing. So first off, just want to touch briefly on solar and EV ready requirements under the current Massachusetts Scratch Code. So the project is meeting these two major requirements uh for Mass Direct, the first of which has to do with rooftop solar readiness. So what is required in the code is that you designate an area of your roof on the construction documents that is noted as a future location for potential solar panel installation. Uh, you have to design the roof so that it can actually take it because obviously you're not actually ready unless the structure will handle the panels at a later date. You have to provide um additionally reserved space in your electrical panel, right? You don't, so in other words, they don't want you to have to come in and put more equipment in the building. They want you to be sort of ready to go with the panel with a path for cabling with your roof to be ready. And interestingly enough, you actually also have to post a certificate within your building that indicates that you are ready and where that zone is. And additionally, you have to have a small area in the building that is designated for future potential energy storage system. That's a very small footprint of an area. Uh, I know we were just talking about space requirements, so just to be clear, that's not kind of a deal breaker rate in terms of in terms of the zone of an area. So we will be complying with all of those requirements as a part of the project. And then the other portion that you have to include in the project are is you have to be EV ready for a certain percentage of your parking. So when Tony brought up site plan, there was discussion the fact that there are currently seventy three parking spaces found, right? So as that gets finessed over the course of the design, what we have to carry is that ten percent of those spaces have to be EV ready. So at the moment, for instance, that would be eight spaces because of course you can't have a fraction of space. You have to round up. So that number could, you know, shift and move as we go. And basically what you have to do there, similar to the solar zone, is you got to have your wiring, it's connected to the service panel, it's brought to a certain point and terminated, right? So that again, you don't have to go back into your building, add a bunch of other stuff to be EV ready. You are literally ready to potentially purchase the chargers and place them into service on your site. And that is what the project is planning in terms of code compliance for those two areas. Now, um, just to be clear, because this has been a topic of conversation uh with the various groups along the project. In terms of that area that we're talking about for the building where we could potentially install solar panels. Um, Tony just showed that 3D schematic, this is the same one, right, that you're looking at here in this in this view. Uh, the front of the building there facing Main Street, right, your historic front. There's a small area of roof, but really what we have is we have these two areas here on the on the slightly northern side of the building where we have new flat roof that we are creating, which is a good area to think about installing solar. And this is what the area that we have assumed for solar readiness for a whole host of reasons. One of which being, of course, this portion of the building faces Main Street, it's in the historic district. And frankly, if you look at the structure of this roof and you think about how much area there actually really would be available to put a panel or two, it doesn't work very well. And additionally, this is an older building as we were just reviewing and the way that buildings have been built over time, of course, is is very different than how we build them now. And structural requirements now for seismic and for loading and things like solar panels are very different than they once were. So a lot of our older roof structures actually don't work well at all for the additional loading of solar panels. And our side wings, again, don't provide a lot of space. So that's why we're showing these two large flat areas. That equates to about thirty six hundred square feet potentially available for PV panels. And that's what we have assumed in terms of an area and what could potentially happen in terms of solar generation, which we will see when we get to talking about lifecycle costing um for the potential HVAC system later on. So we're going to talk through our three potential systems options that we have reviewed, and I'm going to turn it over to Ken to do that. Oh, Ken, you're muted.
Sorry. So just so folks know, Ken Beck is the principal at um BLW Engineers. And we've been working with Ken for a number of years. And he's, he was on this project with us when we started in twenty sixteen.
So good evening, everyone. Uh, so we did look at three different systems, uh HVACs, systems for this project. All three are all electric. All three are multi-zone systems able to provide uh simultaneous heating and cooling. And all three use uh energy recovery ventilation and exhausts. Uh, the first system we looked at is a variable refrigerant flow system or VRF. It, um, so the pros are some of the ones that I just mentioned that are common to all three systems. Uh, it is a refrigerant to air system. Um, it has outdoor equipment, as you can see in the picture below, that is interconnected to indoor equipment by refrigerant piping. Uh, the cons total, it's almost a total replacement except for your duct systems in a twenty year life. And it is, the efficiencies get lower as you approach fifteen degrees. So under fifteen degrees, the efficiency starts to wane. Uh, it does operate down to minus seventeen degree out. Next system is an air source heat pump that will use he- that would produce heating hot water and chilled hot water, a chilled cooling for air conditioning. Uh, it would look similar to a a chiller like the picture in the lower right. Um, it is a very expensive piece of equipment. Uh, it's probably about ten times more expensive than a typical chiller. Um, again, it has the same operating characteristics within the building as all three systems. Um, it would use insulated chilled water, heating uh water piping to provide simultaneous heating and cooling to indoor units in the building. The cons is uh indoor mechanical room space will need a plate and frame heat exchanger, buffer tanks most likely due to the limited run of piping and pumping systems. Again, the efficiency start to weigh in at fifteen degrees and the cost of the heat pump. We can move on. And the last system was the ground source heat pump system. Uh, we are, we are recommending closed wells. Um, that's what we seem to have seen the best uh best uh solution for these types of systems. Uh, it is an all electric system and it would use insulated water piping uh from water to water heat heat exchangers. So this is a water to water system. Um, and it would have simultaneous heating and cooling to uh the individual spaces of the in the building. Uh, this might require a bigger mechanical room than there are other options. Um, and the fixed costs. Uh, first cost of the system excluding rebates is a con and it requires an underground well filled for the heat sink. Key facts for uh the heat pump system, uh, it is the most efficient system. It has the lowest carbon footprint. It will reduce overall EUI. This is most simplistic of all the systems since it uses the ground as its heat sink. It has the lowest lifecycle costs. Uh, a big chunk of the system has a fifty year lifespan, including the piping system and the well field. And there is no mechanical rooftop equipment. Uh, the presence of rock drilling through rock is generally good as it provides a stable borehole. Rock is decent for thermal conductivity. And according to the USDA Soil Survey Map, the soil in Westford when not rock, when rock is not present is generally conducive. Is there another line there?
There is another line. Do you notice it? Basically, what we mostly have is is a moist, fine sandy soil here in Westwood, which is pretty, actually generally pretty good for conductivity, which is really what we're we're driving at with these three points here at the bottom. All right. So relative to the ground source heat pump system in particular, uh, we want to talk a little bit about the Inflation Reduction Act. Um, as Ken noted, the first cost, and we'll get into all the numbers in a minute, is is higher for a a ground source heat pump system. However, there's been a big sea change out there in the last couple of years, um, which starts to make looking at ground source heat pumps very attractive, actually, um, for a whole host of reasons. So for those who aren't as familiar with it, um, everyone's probably heard about the IRA, right? Um, what the IRA really did was put a lot of money into the basket of um of looking for uh tax incentives out there for people to really drive clean energy. And the interesting thing about the IRA is that they got pretty agnostic, okay, about different systems that you could use. So they really promoted a lot of different ways of looking at this, from investing in ground source heat pumps, looking at research for clean nuclear, looking at conversion of coal plants in certain communities, right, and giving extra tax incentives in those communities. So really what they were trying to do was to drive this movement to green energy kind of across the spectrum. So really what they were trying to do was to drive this movement to green energy kind of across the spectrum. And appeal to a lot of people in different situations, right, across the country. So this investment in carbon reduction, it was about cutting our total emissions forty percent by twenty thirty. And about extending a program, which is known as the Investment Tax Credit or the Energy Tax Credit for another decade. So this bit at the bottom here, that first line that's bolded where it talks about the key facts. This act is funded at the current percentages for another ten years, okay? Because that's been a big question that's been raised by everybody. Well, is the money really going to be there, right? If we look at using IRA funds to help us offset these costs. Now, the other big piece that came with the IRA that's very important is that this is no longer just about tax credits, right? So what they did at the, at the level of the legislation was to, was to draw a line, say, if you're on the for-profit side. We're going to extend these tax credits and make them available to a lot more people for a lot more time, right? So that we can drive this green energy um investment across the country. If you're on the not-for-profit side of the line, so think about not-for-profit institutions. And they specifically said state and local government, right? What happens is if you were to take the amount of money that would have been given to you as a tax credit, they're going to send it as a direct payment to these not-for-profit owners. So that was a big game changer in terms of trying to help people invest in these systems, which do sometimes have this larger first cost. Um and the these payments, however, another important point is that the payments, of course, are received after project completion, right? So when you're thinking about how to, you know, make your way through system decisions, that's just important for everybody to keep in mind. So with that in mind, we will talk a little bit about cost.
So these two charts here uh compare all three options for the HVAC system, one without solar and one with solar. Uh the most, your, the, the columns you're probably most interested are in are the first cost, the estimated HVAC construction cost. In the first column, um that's what we anticipated to cost you in day, day one at the start of the project. Uh the next one you want to look at is the estimated construction cost with rebates or redu- or reductions. Um as you can see, the re- the rebates and IRA direct payment make it tremendous. Um tremendous effect on all three of these, mostly the ground source heat pump. It drops the ground source heat pump in both cases with solar and without solar, from the most expensive to the least expensive in all three cases. And then looking at the annual costs, um the ground source again has the uh the least operating cost on an annual basis. And the estimated, least estimated maintenance cost on an estimated bas- basis. Combining all three, uh we come up with a thirty year life hot cycle cost. And again, in both cases, the geothermal heat pump uh comes out with the lowest uh thirty year life cycle cost.
And so that's why, in short, the design team is really recommending the ground source heat pump as a choice for the HVAC system for the project. Um it meets a lot of the green goals of the town, your general carbon reduction goals. And with the implementation of the IRA, to Ken's point, it really does make a huge difference in the overall cost. For the system. So this is just the key facts again for folks to review, uh but we have some questions.
Um I have a question. If you could just try to um explain the timing of when we need to make this decision. And when we would know that we've qualified for um the IRA rebate? Or is that rebate just sort of automatic?
I, I can just chime in on the, on the uh timing of this decision. We need that, we needed the decision. Um to to begin our design development phase. So we're hoping to get that some, the decision tonight. But Rebecca, can you comment on the timing of the IRA funding?
So the, the town would need to engage with a tax advisor to begin the process of really fully understanding all the paperwork, et cetera. That's going to need to be filed throughout the life of the project in order to receive the rebate. Um we are working on a couple of other projects uh where this is sort of just in the like early stages of beginning. I can't give you an exact answer to that, but I think Sue wants to weigh in, and I bet she has something to say about this.
Thanks for calling on me. Um I've been making quite a few calls today to try to. Uh develop more resources for us in this regard. I have a lead on um a firm that can help us develop an RFP in order to acquire. The appropriate legal and tax assistance we would need to make sure that we remain, become eligible and remain eligible throughout the process. Um I was charged with finding out how much that might cost us in the budget. We understand, I think from a previous presentation, that fifty percent of the cost of that guidance would be reimbursable under the IRA. Um but we don't have that budget number yet. I um need to call on some of the people here on the call tonight to meet with. Um my contacts and, and put that together for the town. Um but I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're, we're working that issue and um. It, we don't anticipate that any hurdles with that. We just have to work through the process with the people who uh can provide us with that expertise.
And maybe I can just weigh in. Um I've already reached out to the town manager and the finance director. And will also have to be talking with the town treasurer. Because what this could involve is um one year when the debt exclusion schedule. Has to really be smoothed over because there's a bump in what we need to borrow. And then um that funding is replaced at the very end when we get the one point four million dollars back from the IRA. So it's, it's a interesting program because we always think of ourselves as a tax exempt municipality. Without having to file any tax forms, but evidently under this program. We will have to have a professional who's conversant in this process. Um filing taxes for us, I guess, multiple years until we finally complete our project and can get our rebate.
Actually, just let me clarify that. So the town is going to go through this process for our electric vehicles for fiscal year twenty three and twenty two. Backward looking, so we'll be registered with the IRS. We'll have gone through the process with something very straightforward. This payment would be, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's a one form. We fill it out one time upon completion of the build and the project because it's thirty to thirty five percent of the geothermal. Cost um of the project. And then it comes back to us in that lump sum in that year, the tax year. You know, the same as your own tax forms. After your tax year is over, you file, you get the rebate or the credit as part of your taxes six months later. So it's not a multi-year funding at the end, but it is, we're going to carry that in the beginning until we get the tax credit. Does that make sense?
And we get a rebate for the tax advisor to some extent.
Correct.
So is there any questions on uh what Rebecca and Ken went through?
Yeah, so Tom had to leave uh six, so I guess I'm, you know, my victims. Um so Chris, you get your hand up. Uh just quickly, what is the, is the current library hydronic system presently?
Steam.
Steam?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, this project would involve, we've, whatever choice was made, we'd be refitting the whole building, not just.
Yeah, the, the entire system that's there now would have to be replaced.
Got it, yeah. Um. Your chart, chart that mentioned twenty year expected lifetime for VRF system. With my experience of one building, um we got less than, probably less than fifteen years. And the replacement cost to remove and put in. Um multiple millions of dollars, Cameron Senior Center. So it, it just, what's the mission to discuss a VRF system and you're saying refrigerant as. The, the fluid that you're moving energy around versus just using water for hydronic. My vote's always for something that's simple and I like water.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh and I'm familiar with that building. I don't, I think I worked on a report.
I've read your report, yeah.
Yeah, looking at that and uh I think you're, you are fortunate enough to get another very good system to, to begin with. And, you know, I think it was several years ago when it was put in, and I think the VRF has come a long ways in, in the last ten to fifteen years. Um, you know, I wouldn't be afraid of it now. I mean, I think there were a lot, I think when that system was done. It was newer to a lot of contractors and a lot of engineers, and I think there were multiple um failings. Along the path, but during that, during the installation of that project.
It made me vomit as I looked at it. Uh so, you know, my, of the three options. You know, going with hydronic would be either the heat, their source heat pump or the ground source heat pump would be my. The intuition that I developed from observing failures. Um and then, of course, just with the air handlers maximizing the thin areas so that uh we can run water temperatures low as possible. Um and then if rebates are such that the ground source. Uh the cost for installing the wells is offset by the, the IRA, then that's the better engineering. Solution is ground source heat pump. Um but uh so I'm, I'm fine with whether air source or ground source, but just the VRF. Even with the improvements that you mentioned, you still then stated it's only twenty years and the cost for replacing that is exceedingly non-trivial. So uh other option two to three would be my preference.
Yeah, it's kind of funny. If you look at the lifecycle cost, it actually, it actually flip flops, you know, in terms of the system that's most advantageous. You know, it goes from one, two, three to three, two, one, um based on, you know, that twenty year lifespan. So that, that is a consideration.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, Ken, it's probably important to note too, though, right, that air source is actually the least efficient.
It is, it is less efficient, slightly less efficient.
Yeah, essentially you go with air source when drilling wells is too expensive. But if you have IRA money, then that changes the balance equation. Um also, as part of what uh we looked at with the uh Senior Center was, you know, sort of decoupling. Making the building um ready to be upgraded as technology evolves. And so what was very costly for Cameron was to replace all the distribution piping, changing from refrigerant to, to water. Um but the argument was, once you did that, you probably get, you know, fifty plus years out of the hydronic distribution. But what constantly evolves is, is at least with an air source heat pump is the technology for um that side. So we, we intentionally designed the system such that it may be easy as technology evolves to forklift in. Just in the mechanical room upgrades. Now, in this uh solution you're proposing, you're not using refrigerant in the ground loops. You're using uh water in the ground loops, so um I don't really imagine there's going to be much technical evolution of the. Um uh of the antifreeze, so you know, essentially at that point. Um technology evolution isn't such a big deal when you have a hydronic, hydronic system.
Well, it, it can be though. I mean, as, as long as you have that hydronic distribution, you, whatever the, you know, twenty years from now. Whatever the next new thing is, it can be inserted in place of the water to water heat pumps. So it's, you know, maybe, maybe thirty years from now, water to water heat pumps and geothermal is not the most efficient thing that you have. But you still have that internal uh water distribution system i- in the building.
Exactly. So decoupling the, the, the energy transfer, which is out of the ground or the air from the energy distribution. Which is all the plumbing in the building, making the plumbing in the building last fifty plus years. And keeping everything contained in the mechanical room or outdoors um for the things that change make a lot of sense.
In, uh the other thing I just wanted to mention, um Chris, that you mentioned the, 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 the drilling of the wells are expensive. So one thing that we are looking for tonight also is an approval to get a test uh board done. Yeah, it came before you guys, I think at your last meeting or uh the previous one. We have a proposal, a new one that does not require a deposit. Um but the idea is that for us to design the system efficiently and effectively. We really need a test board done. And that test board can be part of the uh, the well field when we're, when we're uh during construction. And that I think is around seeing forty seven thousand. So we're looking for that uh.
Forty two.
Forty two, thank you. For, so we're looking for that uh either yes or no tonight. But we don't recommend doing this without doing a geothermal without that data point because we'd be guessing.
Yeah, I think that, I was, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott.
Well, we could, we can recommend it tonight, but we can't approve it tonight. That's a. Over, over ten thousand dollars, select board decision with ten minutes. So we'd have to recommend to her or to the support board, and they'd be on the. I guess the thirteenth, it's going to be. Second Tuesday.
I, I actually emailed Kristen Scott, and so she's aware that um she wants to see an approval by this group. And then have it brought to the select meeting.
Right, so we, we recommend it, but, but they had approved it. Uh I just want to, for some expectations with Ellen that we can approve it, but we can't. Really approve the money.
Understood. Yes, I understand what you're saying, Scott. But we'll, we'll need your support one way or the other.
Then?
So, yeah, not, so I'm not, wasn't part of the working group, but the last meeting, there were concerns that there was bedrock in that area of town. Did that get resolved?
The, sorry, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, so I, I think bedrock's not a bad thing. Um it is very, it's very conductive. It's, it makes the well, uh the well bore very stable. Um so I think in terms of having bedrock, it might be a little more expensive to drill, but I think it's actually, it could be better for your system. And it might actually end up, you know, in ma- making the field smaller. Um, you know, that, and that's one thing we really want to do is we want to be able to define the well field. Um I think, you know, if we go with uh, you know, a standard uh number, you know, what we're going to get out of each uh well. Uh if it's plus or minus, if we get, we need more or we need less based on a, a test board that has to be done in the future anyway. Um it's never, you, the town's never given, getting a competitive bid on that. It's gonna, you're gonna be getting. Uh, you know, fifty cents on the dollar or paying a dollar fifty on the dollar. So I think it, it really, I think it's really in, it's, it's in on, it's in the best interest of the town to, to do the test board. I, I think in the long run, it's going to save you money.
Chris, your hand up again, or is it?
Yeah, I was just going to say that uh, that the struggle that we had um last time that we discussed this is it was, there was a. The only specific thing that was stated was the dollar amount, and there was really no discussion of what the uncertainty was, so. Um, you know, I, but our best understanding at the time was you're basically wondering how much dirt until you hit bedrock. Um I think everyone uh with experience in center town knows that there's a lot of rock there. Um but if you're saying that uh if you see sandy soil versus rock. You could have a, you know, plus or minus twenty percent change in the, the field, then, then that, that seems to make sense. Essentially, what are the unknowns that you're chasing after that the test board will answer is, I guess, was the question that we had last time.
Well, we just, we just want to be able to define what that, what that well is going to be able to give us in terms of heating and cooling capacity. So how many, how many wells are we actually going to need? You know, right now, we're just using a standard well. For, you know, anywhere in Massachusetts and saying we're going to get four tons of heating and cooling out of it. Um and based on your soil conditions, it, you might only get three and maybe you'll get five. So it could have a big impact on the number of wells you have. Um and defining that well field and have it competitively bid by the contractors. Uh you're going to get very good prices versus bidding a well field that we're, you know, we're making standard assumptions on. And may, it may deviate by plus or minus two, three, four, five. Um, you know, then you're paying it as a change or, or getting it back as a credit, which you're never going to fully re- realize.
It's a lot more risk for the town.
So you're testing the thermal conductivity with the test board or you're just drilling and looking at soil?
Well, it's actually a thermal conductivity test.
Okay, okay, that, that, I wish we knew that information last time. Would have been a more easy decision.
So Ellen, is a decision being made by the PTBC or PTC BC plus trustees? Did um Kristen indicate which was the case?
Um, I, I think she hoped that the joint committee would recommend. And, and then um I would be bringing it back to her and um for the next agenda. And, and then um I would be bringing it back to her and um for the next agenda. To, to be approved as a contract.
So if. If there's no more questions, I maybe, I wanna get that over before you forget about it. So. I would, I guess, ask for. A motion to approve recommending forty two thousand dollars to do the. Test for and was it connectivity test um for the library?
So moved.
Forty-two nine. Forty-two thousand nine hundred.
So Chris made the motion for a second?
Second.
Okay, so I guess both of you call, call it all?
Yeah, was that Nancy who seconded?
Jean.
Ellen. Jean. It was Ellen.
Ellen, okay.
Jean.
All right, here we go. Clint Mon.
Hi.
Derek's eye Fleckner. Mary Ann, can you unmute? Let's see, I have Mary Ann on the phone. Mary Ann, can you hear, if you can hear me, I need you to unmute. You know what, we'll, we'll go on and Roach is not here. C core.
Hi.
Teal?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Hizzleton?
Hi.
Herpinski?
Hi.
Mahana?
He's left.
Oh. Oh, really? He's still showing?
No, he said he had to leave.
Okay, all right. Uh, Roberts?
Hi.
Ziegowitz?
Yes.
Okay. So let's see, Mary Ann Fleckner, we still didn't, I, I won't, I won't be able to count her in, so.
Mary, Mary Ann is texting me that she's saying yes on the vote. I don't know if that counts.
All right, we'll take her.
Okay.
Uh, do we count, do we count Beth too?
Um, who?
I don't think so. I think it's just Board of Trustees and Permanent Town Building Committee. Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry, Beth. That's right. Okay, so I, I guess we, we, we pass unanimously.
So ten zero zero.
Great. Thanks. I guess Ellen, back to you.
And one thing, if I could just chime in, um, Scott, we're also looking for support and I don't know uh if you guys approve this. Or not, I'm sure Ellen will let us know, is that we um have approval to move on to the next phase, which would be the de- design development phase of the project.
Should we discuss costs?
Sure. Alicia has the cost info.
Oh, cost for the construction estimate or for moving on to the next phase? I'm sorry.
Um, I, I think. We need to know what the budget, where the cost estimate landed and where, how it fits into the budget.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we can let Rebecca and Ken go if we're done with the energy part of our discussion? Or would you prefer them to stay on?
If we're done with them, I, with that segment, I would say, yeah, have a good, have a good evening.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks so much, guys.
Quick question on that before you all take off is that uh, do we get a, um, do we have copies of those? Uh, those costs in the information that was submitted or attached to each?
We will drop those in the, if that hasn't been dropped in the folder already that you all have access to, it will be right after this meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Already. So I'm gonna just share a summary of the. SD costs, I'll share my screen. Okay. Um, just on here, the construction budget is uh as defined in the, in the total project budget. Is twenty-four. Million one hundred fifteen, seven fifty-nine. The e- the estimate that came in from, there were two estimates done, one by the design team and. Benetsey Consulting is the one hired by the design team. One was done by CHA and they were reconciled. Your estimate of record is um technically the design team's estimate. That estimate came in at um twenty-four point three million with a difference of two hundred and seventeen. Thousand dollars, which is less than one percent difference. Now, I, I recognize twenty seventeen thousand dollars is money. But it's in the big picture, less than one percent is especially for being in SD. It's not a big deal to, to, as we get further along, it will be a big deal. Right now, I don't see that, but we do have some thoughts about how we could bring some of that down. To you now. Some of the notes, I'll just say that the, there is escalation included. There had been a question at the working group about whether the. Estimate is to the beginning of construction or to the midpoint of construction. Uh, the issue is that the. Estimates are both, both of them were done to the beginning of construction. However, they take into it their unit costs. That they include into their estimate. Um, takes into account, it takes into account the different things. For example. The concrete costs where you have most of your concrete at the beginning of the project with foot- footings. Has it, has, takes into account that it happens at the beginning of the project and light fixture costs. Take into account, yeah, their unit costs that it happens later into the um construction process. So. It takes into account midpoint of the construction, but it is definitely to the beginning. That makes sense. Um, there are step, because we are in early days, where it includes one point. Eight million dollars in contingencies and the ideas we get, go further along in the process, the more fact there is, in fact, I mean. More drawings and, and more things drawn and more details and. Less uh guesses and assumptions made by the estimators. While, while there's, those guesses are a place where actually drawn things. The contingency will be lowered and there'll be more um. Um, factual numbers put into the estimate. This also, this whole, this project assumes also that the, at the ground floor, the entire slab in there is going to be removed. An entire underslab drainage and waterproofing system will be put in under the slab. So that there will no longer be water issues.
Right, because there's currently water issues.
Right. And um, and insulation, but that's required by.
Correct.
Code, I'll just put that in there. Um, the estimate also includes a hundred percent cleaning of all the uh, of the existing. Building and as you're power washing, some of the uh pointing may come loose and so some of the twenty-five percent repointing. The, it is felt that the building is in good shape right now. Is it actually a very good shape and this might not be needed and this is absolutely something that could be done. Anytime, you know, after the project is completed as well. Um, there's also, oh, this also assumes that the. Windows will be double glazed, high performance double glazed windows and the curtain wall, which is. Uh, sort of the, in the new part facing towards the parking lot, those bigger pieces would be triple glazed. And this will be confirmed during the DD, during the energy modeling, but those are the assumptions that are made right now based on. Other projects that design team has done, they have found that's to be the. The balance of the cost efficiencies versus cost. But again, this is to be confirmed later, but that's the assumption right now. It includes the solar panel infrastructure uh only and it includes a full roof replacement. This also includes a lightning protection at twenty-six thousand dollars. Ellen, uh, um, Rainfield feels pretty comfortable sitting next to that big church with the big spire that uh, you know. You guys are in good shape and, and haven't been hit to date, but that's your decision. And also there have been recent refusions to the plumbing code that. Basically popped up, I think in December, pretty recently, said now, effective now. So those have not been taken into an account in the drawing because they didn't. Literally have time to draw them because usually there's a grace period with these things, but they have been taken into account. For the estimate. So that's my list. I'll stop sharing so I can see all of you better and I'll answer Chris's question first.
Hey, thank you. Um, for the. Uh, slab work for the water. Groundwater mitigation, will that also include work to be sure to vent soil gases so that we don't find we have a radon problem?
That's a really good point, Chris. Chris, we'll be sure to do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, when you're right there, it's just, it's.
Yes.
Zero point one percent dollars to do it.
Yep, absolutely. Good idea.
And that, yes, because you're, we're in a granite area, that's definitely.
Yep.
Sorry, Jean?
Um, a, a few weeks ago, there was discussion about CM at risk versus design bid build. And I was wondering, does the cost estimate include? Um. GC costs or CM at risk costs?
That, that's the estimate right now, the assumption is, sorry, also around a VRF system. And the geothermal system is shown as an ad alternate, just so you know, there is a copy of the estimate that's dropped in that folder that you all have access to if you haven't looked at it already. So it's built around that VRF system and the second thing, um, it's built around uh GC uh. Costs of design bid build, all traditional design bid build um process. We did talk to the uh cost estimators about this and um a, a good point which is brought up. That when you're in, again, the further you kind of get outside the city, you may or may not, you're probably, you know, the, there are always going to be. Trades that are going to be union. But as you're. Some and some not. And if you go with a. Um, at uh forty-nine A at risk, CM at risk solution. More than likely, you are going to get one of the bigger firms out of Boston, which have relationships with. Unions and now your job is suddenly all of union. And so it, it does make the project a little bit more expensive. And because you, uh, because it now suddenly has to be all union. I just. I'm just sharing that with you. It does make it a little bit more. Anecdotally. Doesn't, so.
So you'd recommend that we not do CM at risk at this point?
I'm not, I, but there obviously if money were no object, absolutely. I'd much rather have a partner on board and it would be a partner. I would much rather have that. But the, you know, with the costs that are associated with it, yes, we might save on some. Change orders. I think it's um, I don't want to take a million dollars out of the building to, to. I, I don't know how we would take a million dollars out of the building to help offset some of those costs. So I think it's um, it's kind of tough.
It's uh, from our perspective, Gina's architects, it's, it's. It's, there's pros and cons, the pro, one of the benefits is you get a better quality subcontractor typically.
Which you do, would be great, but it does.
But no, I, I'm with you on the costs. I'm with you on the money part, Alicia.
So any more questions, I guess? That, that, that was a question on, on. On cost, but Glenn, was that a hand raised or?
I'm sure, just what is it that we're voting on?
Nothing yet, I guess, I guess, and we had, I'd be back at the point now where we would be voting on. Moving to design development, but I guess the question for Ellen?
Yep.
I think so, Alicia, correct? That's what we're shooting for, yeah.
If there are no other questions, I think basically the design team wants to know if they, they can go forward and then they'll probably um, once they. Um, have permission to do the, the bore. And get the results of the bore, which takes a couple of weeks, then they can really put it in gear, but they um, we, they do need that data to be able to. To really get, to get a wiggle on, but they can start now.
Yeah, and we.
Stay on track.
We have the company to do the board, they're. Ready to get going, yeah. Tied up, thank you.
We've already voted that one, so.
Yes, yep.
Jim?
So uh, just to get the timing down here. We have uh supported the, the idea of going ahead and getting the, the test board done. But what, what are we looking at for, for, to get that turned around? A couple of weeks? Do we say that the meeting's in a couple of weeks? Okay, and in the meantime, what are we doing with the uh, with that subcontract? Are we letting them know that this is gonna be a, it's gonna be green lighted? So they're ready to go right after that?
They're teed up, they're teed up.
The uh. Yeah, I'm just trying to try to.
So we've got.
Time, that's gonna affect the design development.
That it will, we need to, to keep moving, otherwise it not only affects design development, but obviously affects the whole. Process going.
That, that's, I'm just kind of trying to figure out, you know, what that extra two weeks is gonna do. And then, because my assumption is at that point, we had questions uh earlier tonight that. Uh, about what the piping's doing, is that going overhead? We can have big enough mechanical rooms, things like that. Are they gonna actually be located where they are? Uh, that are pretty significant in terms, terms of what you're doing with the building floor plan. So I'm just trying to gauge where this go, you know, how that's going to impact the design development.
Well, this is the.
I just want to make one clarification and then I'll let Ellen talk about her design process, is that the test board would be, is hired. By the architect, which you're actually approving is the amendment to the architect. To do this work. So if the architect wants to release the bore company early.
Right of that.
Yeah, that's up to them, Ellen.
Yes, thank you, Alicia. I was gonna say that. So we, we have them teed up, they're ready to go. Um, we, I misunderstood and I thought we would get the approval tonight, but that's fine. So we, we can, we'll just. Evaluate it in the office. If, if it's a risk, uh, uh, it's a big risk for us to take if they decide not to do it. Uh, so we probably have to wait to get that because it's just, it would be a huge risk for us. Um, but we. Wh- when we had the discussions with Ken Beck, there's a lot of other things that are. Electrical in the plumbing engineers can get going on as well as our, our stuff that we need to start working on. So uh. We, we can start our design development. There's a lot to do that, uh, that is not just revolved around. Uh, mechanical and I think one of the, the items that uh Jean spoke to or somebody did, we need to get in front of the town committees. And that's something we, we do in design development and we really want to get that part going.
Yeah, I'm just, I could tell you that not to worry about. Uh, Google, and I, I, the probability is yes, it would pass without much discussion, but I can't. You know, I can't guarantee that. So I would not want, if it was me, I wouldn't spend forty grand.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Scott.
Chris? As, what have you done? You done, Jim?
Uh, well, I just wanted to reiterate that, so it's a, it's a pretty big. Um, it's a pretty big component in terms of we're gonna add forty thousand dollars or. Fifty thousand dollars to the, to the scope of the project to, to get an idea of what we're doing and how to design this mechanical system. So seems like a pretty, pretty important one. Um. And it seemed like we had some space planning issues. I'm really, you know what, I guess I would be interested in Ellen is, is to see what uh, um. What was his name, the engineer?
Ken Beck, Ken Beck.
Kind of, I'd really be curious to see if he thought that the, the current size of the mechanical. Spaces were adequate and reasonably located. They just seemed like there were a bunch of questions revolving around that. That, that are tied to this fifty thousand dollar increase in, in the contract, uh, which again, I. Okay, it, it is what it is. I'm good with that. Just wondering how that's gonna shake up your. Plan if.
It's gonna change our.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, Alicia.
Space.
Yep.
Yep, I'm, I'm just gonna add, say one thing. Yes, you're gonna pay forty-two thousand dollars for that bore to be done. However, and the assumption right now is twenty-five wells. If it turns out we need twenty-five wells, you're only gonna have to build twenty-four more. And the cost of a well is estimated at thirty-seven thousand dollars. So. The test, if we end up going forward with the geothermal, which is the assumption, it would actually, this test is only cost, should be cost, like see it as a five thousand dollar delta. Does that make sense?
Sure, and I, I didn't need to uh nag on that. I guess my concern is more the process and. Where that, where things are going from here. If, if we're, we're short thirty percent on mechanical space located in the, in the very bowels of the building, that, that turns out to be.
I think that's one of the, one of the things the design team needs to approach first, spending their time on.
Right, Jim, I, I, I see where you're going with this. I think is that, you know, if we, if it comes back that we need. Um, a bigger mechanical room and it needs to be where the meeting room is, that's a, that's a significant change for us. So totally get what you're saying. Yep, and then so. One thing you could do is wait till we get that bore report, but that's gonna push the whole process out. And I don't know if you, Alicia, in terms of funding and reviews or MBLC and all that stuff, where that goes.
You know, Ellen, I'm thinking more that um, just sort of disaster planning, like what does, you know, can we get a, can we get a, a size in from the engineer? That says, you know what, we really should.
We can get that, Jim. We can get that tomorrow. We can get Ken on the phone and, and just, i- i- the best thing about working with that group BLW is. They're there when you need them. So if we want him to do a rough layout of a geothermal mechanical space, he'll do it for us.
Yeah, I didn't even know about the layout. I'm just, I'm just thinking base allocation because we're sort of tight. There's no, we, we can't even, we were talking earlier about not even be able to pump the building out in the back to articulate the wing. So, right, we're, because we're that tight on space. So that's not, that's it, that's all. Thanks for listening.
Thank, thank you though, Jim.
Okay, Chris?
Okay, I think you got there that um. I think you need a. Okay, I think you got there that um, I think you need a sensitivity metric from the engineer to say how much of a delta does he expect the mechanical room to change in size after he gets his thermal conductivity test of the soil.
Yeah.
You know, it seemed like on the order of five or ten percent was sort of where his head was nodding when I was talking. And so um really the decision is now, you're now going looking to depart from a V R F system, which sounds like what you planned the building for based on the cost numbers to a system that's gonna have um a hydronic component to it. So I would say that, you know, don't serialize having to do the bore tests first before you get started with design, that that getting the space for the mechanical room is probably gonna be the hardest part and just worst case it for now until you get the final answer from the engineer.
Well, we, so I I I'm not sure folks know, so that on this level of schematic design, they are engineers. They advised us on the size of, you know, approximately what would need for a mechanical room. Um, so it, we have to, to your point, Chris, we have to get a little bit more defined on that if it was going to be geothermal. But we'll do that, that'll be, we'll get that A S A P. All good points.
So I guess the next step to go is to make a decision on approving, moving forward to, was it D B?
Yes, yeah, design development.
Is there a motion that affects?
I'll make a motion, Scott, I'm sorry.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, so I guess Buffy, we can call the call list.
So I want to know what the motion was.
The motion is to move forward with uh design development.
Okay. And with the budget review and all that?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
That was Nancy and Jim?
Yeah, that seemed like a uh, you had a pretty good chunk of the schedule uh allocated to that. Can we get a you know, any anything you have as you go. Great to to see. The what you have by, and I, if I could, I'll just offer the rest of uh anybody who wants to listen, I think what you have already was fantastic. Uh, the the specs way out there, the drawings are are looking good, they're yeah, a lot of stuff uh already going on there. So it's uh, I'm looking forward to see what's happening next.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, thanks. So Buffy, for a couple of roll, please.
Yeah, so we're gonna vote on the design and the budget review then. So Claremont?
Hi.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner?
She votes yes.
Okay, thank you. And Roach not here, Secor?
Hi.
Teal?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Hazelton?
Hi.
Kropinski?
Hi.
Hannah is still not here, is that right?
Right.
Thank you. Roberts?
Hi.
Zegowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Ten zero zero.
Okay, thanks. What's next? Eleanor Ellen, I guess.
I think that's it for us, Scott, actually.
Yeah, I think we're fine. Next week, we have invoices to approve and uh we will um we'll have the report to the state to approve, but this was critical and so welcome tonight. And uh, you know, all of the notes we've took will definitely um, you know, start to take action and uh start to look toward all of those internal review steps that we have to take as well.
Yes, thank you for your support.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you for all your time tonight. So Jim, is there a question from you?
There was, I just wondered if we could get the design team to say, uh, just give us an idea of how it goes from here through the um this phase, what we should expect before we we see, uh before in this position again, to approve the next phase.
What we'll be seeing, but uh what we'll be doing is um i- as Tony was mentioning earlier, uh we'll be refining the design and in making adjustments, doing more study um on on the uh energy on windows. Working with Ellen on refining what we have from her program because that's critical. Um, meeting the program for M B L C is critical, so we'll be working really closely with Ellen and her team. Um, it's in, so I don't know, Alicia, if we have it on the docket or when we think we'll come and see this group again. Um, we can sort that out, but we 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 certainly will want to show you progress.
I think definitely, once we have the conductivity report, I think everybody
Yes, good point.
Want an update. I, and you know, worst case scenario, they drill into it and they find something alarming. I have no idea what that would be, but we want to share that information.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not anticipated. I mean, we're there's, we're correcting to find granite, but I don't, you just don't know, so. But either way, we will be certain to share that information with everybody. Because it may, you know, it may influence the track, the path we take, but we'd have to discuss it and review it with you all.
Great, great, that's great. I was just uh in, it'd be nice to see some, you know, yeah, some of that interim progress. Definitely get the answers on the on the well, but some of the interim progress before we get to this, you know, to the to the threshold of the next step.
And we'll be, at the next time we meet, we'll have some three D images that will, that they won't be totally rendered, but they'll give you glimpses of the space in three dimensions. And those are always fun to look at.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Um, not for their team. It's it's really a detail one, since our working group put forth that we recommended the um, the third one. Uh, should we take a motion to accept the I guess I'll ask this of Ellen, should we have a motion to accept the working group's recommendation to go with the um the the H VAC option?
Well, I think the important thing was to approve the geothermal bore because on the results of that. It cannot be the best option. So the most critical thing was to see the numbers and the reason to proceed with the bore and hope for bears out all all good things for a future geothermal system.
Okay, right, but Ellen, we're gonna do a little, some little bit quick study on size of mechanical room for geothermal is, because I think that those are positive steps.
Or we can approve geothermal with the big asterisk of
Yes.
depending on the outcome of the bore. However, you all feel more comfortable doing it, the bore test.
I guess, I guess, do we, do we need, I mean, do you need that approval or is that just like assume that it's the next logical step to take?
We we would, they need the bore test to accurately.
Right, we we we, we approve that, right, but I guess we have to just, you need a motion to approve the geothermal as the
Oh.
Uh, energy trace, or do we?
Shouldn't we wait until we get the size? But let's wait, we're meeting, but let's wait. I mean, we we might not want it, we might not able be able to do that ultimately, so let's let's wait and see if we have room, what they come back with for dimensions. We'll find the room. The thing that I'm worried about is this, the timing, but why don't we, why don't we um check with our engineer, right? So um, we'll get the size and then we'll Jing, we can confirm timing from the from the bore company on the test and um in just the timing, because they know this is.
Yeah, for the turnaround, it's usually four weeks, but they said that they can work to squeeze it a little bit to to two, three weeks. So it's uh, it's gonna take some time.
Well, and it has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen first, select board, it's sorry, first, right on the thirteenth, so.
Yes.
That probably works.
I think I I I agree with others, it's too early to approve a system until we get all the information that we need. We could accept the report of the library working group and the sustainability advisors that that was the m- most cost effective, longest lived, most maintainable system, but I mean, I think we can just show those those.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to wait, I'd like to wait, Ellen, at least we have our information. And I, I'm fine, I, I'm, we're fine with that. Uh, one thing, though, we'll, we'll we'll get maybe more certainty on the date that we'll get a report, but we would want to meet with you guys right after because we're gonna need that, we're gonna need someone to tell us to go, like, the next day. It just, it's gonna, because I'm just worried about the the schedule. Our design development, I don't recall, Jing, is it eighteen weeks? That it just, it's just a concern that.
It's sixteen weeks.
Sixteen weeks, it's uh quite a clip that we're doing this. So we we're already talking, taking it you know, a month out of that for the mechanical system development, but um we'll do, we'll do our best, but I just wanted to just you know, I'm worried about that because we we would have to meet with you, you folks right afterwards to get that approved.
So I think that what what you're seeing here is that our town has a two-headed decision-making team. And as well as the select board, which has to make some other decisions. So it it might make sense for you guys to look at the calendar and set up more meetings with us. Um, that will work towards your sixteen weeks. You know, some preliminary meetings, some, you know, update meetings. I think, right, we we were all, we didn't have the information last time. We didn't know what what you know, the big picture, so we couldn't vote last time and.
And we don't have all the information this time to to make a decision.
So we do have a library working group on the fourteenth. We all meet again on the fifth, a week from tonight, and we would meet March fifth. We could look for uh another time in in late February to squeeze in a potential meeting. So why don't I look for that?
I don't, Ellen, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm looking for a meeting for when we get that report and Jing and I in Macasia will work to get a date of when, if he's released on the fourteenth, when he can get us the report, because that's when, that's the meeting I'm concerned about.
Forty-eight hours in advance, so you know, as soon as you, you, he thinks he's going to start writing the report. Let me know when I'll post a meeting.
Okay, yeah, that's the one, that's the critical one for us for sure.
When is the next select board? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
The thirteen?
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth, thank you.
So if we're done, I think we are, that means the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Buffy, one more time, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded it that time?
Jean.
Jean.
Jean, thank you, Jean. Okay, here we go. Here, um, wait a minute. Lost my list. Claremont?
Aye.
Yerkes, I, Fleckner?
She says yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Roach is not here, Secor?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Teal? Cook?
Hi.
Hazelton?
Hi.
Kropinski?
Hi.
Hannah is not here still, okay. Roberts?
Aye.
And Zegowitz?
Yes.
So we adjourned at eight sixteen.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Ellen.